Pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the community. We didn't have anybody last week and we don't have anybody this week, do we?
Um, we could be wrong.
Somebody might have been.
Unless it's Kyle, maybe he'd be able to make it. The man, the man of men's duty, hey.
Hey, it never hurts to help is what I say.
Your paycheck's in the mail.
Do you think that was him leaving?
That was probably him leaving, but we'll go check.
Better safe than sorry.
It's called delegation, right?
Yeah. First soccer practice tonight.
Sweet.
Mm. Blue, blue and blue. You know how they tell you like the three?
If you had to been like flesh and yellow for years in a row, I'm glad to see that go.
Yeah, we, we won't have a part-time like crossing guard color job, you know what I mean? But the blue, blue, blue. Okay. Response to call the community, we had no call to community last week, so we can move on.
Right.
Staff reports, public works. Mr. Kyle Ames is not with us tonight. So, how do we handle that? Tricia, do you want to try and take it or do we just wait until next month?
I would just say that his report is in your agenda and if you guys have any questions on it, I would say to reach out directly to Kyle to follow up.
Was Kyle gonna talk about anything relevant to the painting of the trees or anything like that?
He and I did have a chance to speak briefly about that today, so.
So when we get to it, we can just cover. Okay, cool. Community and Recreation Services Monthly Report, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. Um, March is off to a good start. Uh, the Arizona Dolphin Swim Team, I told you last month that they were considering, um, coming to, uh, practice temporarily at our facility and they have started that. Everything is going well. They're actually out there right now tonight. And, um, from brief conversations, they're actually interested in the possibility of doing it more often. So, because things are going so well with us, there might be an opportunity, um, for some partnerships in the future with them. So that would be great. Um, Spring Lifeguard Class, our first one is coming up tomorrow. Um, we've got, uh, young participants in that class and, uh, twelve lifeguard applicants and actually I think it's fourteen at the moment and, uh, five new applicants. Fourteen returners, five new applicants. Um, so we're excited to, uh, get in the hiring mode for that. They'll start, uh, the first round of interviews this weekend, uh, for some of the rehires that they're looking to rehire. Um, Preschool Open Enrollment is off to a good start. Um, also, uh, our, uh, Summer Camp is going well. I know I reported, uh, nine campers in June and nine in July. That's up to by a few since, um, my report. So also great. Um, they'll be off next week along with the, uh, Litchfield Elementary School District Kids. Um, for Community Services, we've got our next flag raising ceremony coming up on March fifteenth, um, in honor of the Merchant Marines. Members of the, uh, American Legion Post, um, in Avondale will be coming out and serving as the flag detail. So if you guys are available that morning at eight fifteen, I would, uh, encourage you to stop on by for the flag raising ceremony. Um, we are working on appropriation applications. Those should be going out the end of the month. And, uh, garage sale, uh, signups are, uh, in the works. They're going well. Um, I'll jump briefly to special events. Uh, Spring Orton Wine Festival was this past weekend. The weather was fantastic. The crowd was great. Artists and vendors were very happy. So if any of you made it out and, uh, were part of that, thank you very much. It was a, a great, great time, great event. Um, and, uh, this coming weekend on Sunday, the twelfth, Thaddeus Rose is coming out to the Wigwam Front Lawn from three to five P. M. Should be a very popular concert. Also, free concert. Please join the community. Come on out. And, uh, sports, I will, uh, let Pat fill you in on any updates from my report.
Um, thank you. So, um, sports is, uh, going well. We just finished our spring coaches meeting on Saturday and practices started this week. Uh, we have three, uh, seven hundred and forty-six kids totaled registered into three sports. So we have, um, three hundred and nine in basketball, three hundred and forty-five in soccer and ninety-two in flags. So this is definitely one of the biggest years. Last year we had six ninety-five and now is our biggest year since twenty fifteen. So it just keeps going up and soccer, the interest in soccer has definitely increased than this year than it has in previous. So it's good to see there. Um, we're excited for the season to get started. Um, and then on the February twenty-fifth, we had the, uh, Kiwanis Littrell Park Run. Uh, we had, uh, four hundred and forty-one, uh, registrants, um, beforehand and I think it ended up being the, that same thing during the day off. So it was great weather for everyone to come out and do the run. Um, we had, we heard some great things and like, uh, saw a couple, a couple of you go out there and share people on or even running it. So, um, I think everyone had a great day, so.
Yeah, I think we had several commission members and families out there.
I think we were all there.
Yeah.
I don't know where.
But you had the dog.
I have, I have.
I'm sorry, excuse me, just bring the dog. I'm dog sitting.
But yeah, Brian Colbert ran.
Yeah.
Did you medal? I think you did.
A Cobra did medal.
My daughter and my wife medaled, yeah.
Right on.
I was fourth made.
That was awesome. That's, that's great. As important as he was out there.
But no, everyone seemed to enjoy themselves still.
That's it from Rick unless you guys have any questions.
Can you send a, are you, maybe you did it already and I apologize if you did. Can you send an invite for the March fifteenth? Um, did you say it was a flag racing?
Mm-hmm.
Did I, is that the right date? Uh, these aren't my normal glasses, so I'm.
I'll, I'll double check with, um, Jenna Huffman, uh, at City Hall and confirm whether the RPG Commissioners are on that list. And if not, we'll get you guys on the invite list so you have advance notice of those.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gertz?
Thanks. Um, just curious, are we, I'd share a curiosity really. Um, the appropriations that we, we gave out last year.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any who those are or can we see a list of who those are? I'm just kind of curious what kind of organizations that's going to.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I can give you a list or we can, you can see them online. I can email.
Well, they're online, okay. Well, I can look on the city website and find appropriations and find them.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good enough.
It's, uh, twenty thousand dollars total that the city has available, um, to dole out at the commission, at the council's choosing.
Thank you. Business. Approval of Minutes, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. Um, the minutes for the February ninth meeting are in your agenda packet. Um, if anyone needs a moment to look them over, feel free to do so. And then whenever you guys are ready, um, if you would like to move to approve or move to amend.
I'm to approve the February ninth minutes.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions about the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? So it is passed. Did I, did I sign last month? Did I forget?
I have it here.
Sorry. Yard of the Quarter Selection, presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you Chairman Taddy. Um, you'll see in the agenda packet, there is a tally sheet. Um, we did have a quorum of votes. Uh, the two nominees were one, four, five, six, four, La Jolla Drive with a total of a hundred and fifty-two points and forty-seven, seventeen, Aldia Drive East with a total of a hundred and forty-five points. Um, so I would recommend that, uh, the Commissioners move to, uh, recommend one, four, five, six, four, La Jolla Drive, which had the most votes as yard of the quarter for the first quarter of twenty twenty-three.
I don't think we need a motion for that, right? We could just.
Would you would move to recommend that council.
Approve or award it?
Um, award it essentially or recognize them.
So we do need a motion.
I'll move that, uh, council recommend La Jolla Drive as the yard of the quarter.
I'll second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are opposed? So it is passed.
Is that also the one that had the two nominations?
Yes.
Isn't that funny? Hundreds of houses.
Revamping of Yard of the Quarter, presenter Andy Phillips, RPG Vice Chairperson.
Thank you again for, um, listening to me about Yard of the Quarter. But, um, the Yard of the Quarter program has been as it is right now for over twenty years, at least twenty years. Probably more like twenty-five years. Um, and so that was like before social media. It was really early internet and lots and lots has changed since its inception. Um, I would like to let it evolve. I'm proposing that we don't do away with something that honors our pride, our community pride, our individual pride, the pride that we take in everything in the city, from our programs, our people, our services, to our own homes, yards, features in those. Um, I just feel that for a number of reasons, it's time to maybe abandon the old format and let's see what a new format could look like. I've come up with a few ideas and they're just ideas. Um, I just think that we still need to focus on the pride factor because that's one thing that makes us special and I'm saying pride in a good way, not like, you know, being a show-off or anything like that, but pride in a good way. Um, personally, I feel as Commissioners, we should not be as directly involved that it shouldn't be based on our personal likes, dislikes, all of that because none of us, as far as I know, have any professional degrees in any field that has anything relevant to do with, you know, selecting a Yard of the Quarter winner based on the categories that are in there other than what we personally like and don't like. Um, I think we should aim to be more inclusive. I think we should be more citizen and community driven. Um, needs a new name maybe and maybe we don't even have winners. Maybe we highlight things. And there's not winners per se. Um, I have even come up with, um, an idea and just, you know, humor me a little bit here that if we abandoned the, um, current format and went to something where citizens submitted their own whatever it was, and I've got categories for each quarter, then we are kind of out of the picture of picking, you know, this and this and this. And I would even go so far as to suggest that we don't do winners and I haven't quite figured out how all of this could work yet, but that we then, uh, through our social media, our website, all of that kind of stuff, we, um, highlight the people who have submitted their homes or their features or whatever it is on our website to social media saying, wow, look at this, you know? So the, um, categories that I have for each quarter are winter, which would be January, would be welcome. So it would be like front doors, entryways, street view, sidewalks, that kind of thing. In the spring, which is April, it would be green thumb. Gardens, grassy areas, both natural and artificial, flowers, flower pots. It could even be desert landscaping, that kind of thing. So you could have like a zariscap or arid landscaping or something like that. Summer, July is splash. Water features, spas, pools, fountains, that kind of thing. Fall, October, situs bell, barbecue area, sitting areas, gazebo, fire pits. So we've even, um, gotten, I don't know if you guys know Chuck Emmert, you know, he's now doing all our cool drone stuff.
He's amazing.
Yeah, I mean, he did it for the city of Phoenix, so he knows what he's doing. But he's even interested in, you know, maybe if I submit my fire pit area for the fall one or it's a situs bell, maybe there's something in the submission that says, would you be okay if Chuck Emmert flew the drone over? Or they could also submit a photo of, that they took of themselves, not of themselves, they took themselves of their area that they were submitting. So, I mean, those are just thoughts that I kind of came up with. I've been trying to think of a clever name and don't have that yet. Um, but I would just invite all of you to put your thinking caps on. Uh, this isn't an action item for today. It's just like information discussion. Um, but I would just invite all of you to try to come up with something that's just a little bit more twenty twenty-three, not nineteen eighty-three. Um, and I'd love to hear your ideas.
We're all processing. You've given us so much space. Commissioner Gertz?
Thanks. Um, I think it's important to think about what, what are we trying to achieve? And Andy, I think you've highlighted that we do want people to have the good kind of pride. We probably want to motivate people. And so like, well, that's great. I could do that in my yard. So I think if we just maybe start with enumerating the things that we want to achieve by this, right? We want to encourage people to beautify their yard so that we overall have, have a, you know, a more beautiful community to look at. And yeah, recognize people for the effort they put in. So I think the things you proposed though, like I know, I haven't thought fully through them. I think we're all in that same vein, so I think that's the, the right direction. Um, and I, I do think we should figure out how to include, um, like see the condos or areas that they don't. Hey, look, you, you've got what, like thirty square feet in some cases to work with in the front? So winning Yard of the Quarter is probably not gonna happen unless we have something that's more targeted towards either that, that kind of dwelling or something.
Well, that's why some of these categories allow that because some of those condos along the lake and some of the other ones, they have really nice sitting areas or they've got, done a great job with colorizing through pots and flowers. But we don't see that when we drive by in the front and go, oh, that's a really cool house.
Right. I, I recommended one of those houses one time for the Yard of the Quarter for the backyard, but nobody caught on that it said, go to the back.
I knew that. I went to the front. I was like, getting closer to it.
You know, and we can't see maybe their pool, spa waterfall area because it's in their backyard, but. So I think, I don't know, it just, I think it just opens it up to some of those, um, homes and condos and stuff that just we would never see. We would never get to appreciate what they've done because it's not visible from a street view.
You've done a lot of work. You've given a lot of thought to this. I appreciate that. Um, you know, the first time I drove through our community, probably seventeen years ago, uh, I saw a Yard of the Quarter sign and I have never lived anywhere where I've ever seen that. And to this day, I haven't driven through a community where I've ever seen another Yard of the Quarter sign. And I work up in surprise. I don't see that in any communities up there. And I, I one hundred percent agree that we could be more inclusive with like the condos and things like that. But what makes Litchfield Park special is the nostalgia and is the nineteen sixty-three or nineteen eighty-three or just that, that's part of why I love living here is because it's not two thousand twenty-three. And so I, I worry about throwing out the old. But is there a way to incorporate new as well? You know what I mean? And, and, you know, I'd be in favor of it also. I would hate to replace this. I think it is something that does keep us back in the days, which is a good thing in a lot of ways.
So I came up with a couple, a couple of things, restore and explore because people are restoring these homes. They're restoring their yards. They're bringing them back to life and they're doing that on a seasonal basis, right? And then exploring, some of it has to be done by Chuck with a drone. Um, so I, I guess that would have to be maybe swayed all online so that voters, residents, Commissioners could all see the applicants, whether they submit it or Chuck does it for them, um, and vote that way. I mean, I think we can still keep the Yard of the Quarter and break it down into how it's presented.
Maybe if we have, if we do a, maybe there's an and, right? Maybe there's a way that we can do like we keep Yard of the Quarter. But if we get a more, say, digital or online way of having people submit and look at things, if that takes off, maybe it comes to a point where we go, why are we doing this other thing anymore? Um, but then we sort of could hedge our bets and say, well, the risk of going like, let's have people submit it or people vote online and we're not the ones deciding is that the adoption's pretty low. Um, and then we're, we're looked at where, you know, maybe we have ten people participating. So maybe we can do both. Um, I like the change that we made, I don't remember how many years ago it was, where we said like, okay, let's divide the city up into quadrants because there's areas that you don't live there, you don't drive there, you don't think of the houses. You know, if, if we want to take a, you know, a, a minor step in, in improving it, maybe we need to subdivide it a little bit more. I know it means that we don't get to your area for two years, but it does mean that, okay, now we're looking at the condos and pick a condo for Yard of the Quarter. Like, I don't know, maybe that's a baby step along the way as well.
That's a, that's a reasonable.
So are you thinking like still Yard of the Quarter, but yet if that quarter's in winter, the theme is winter? Is that what you're thinking? You, you know what I mean? So and then in the summer is the theme, summer for that particular.
My summer theme was splash because it's hot in the summer, so it was just like water. You know, anything to do with water or cooling off or, you know, maybe they have a cool outdoor shower area that's really neat or something. I don't know.
But could we tie those in? You know, saying like Christmas, right? Christmas, fourth of July, spring.
Yeah.
Halloween, Thanksgiving.
I guess personally, I just have a really, really hard time judging other people's homes. I hate it. I hate it. I hate it.
Right.
I hate it.
For me, I don't know that I look at it from a, a broad perspective. I mean, I do, but I know like what sells. So then I look to, you know, plant health, yes, plant health, multiple plants. Is it appealing? All those things that we're doing, but yeah, that could also be on a condo, you know, in their small little area. So I think the quadrant thing really was helpful.
Yeah.
That helps a lot. But I kind of like this theme of doing it as a, as a theme. I don't know. Interesting.
Your, your idea about restore and explore, I mean, who doesn't like HGTV, right? And, and, you know, that would be such a cool feature like on our city webcam, our, our city Facebook page or Twitter, what, you know, whatever the social media we're using is, is hey, you know, here we are in the summer. Submit your water features. I saw the, our historical, historical society has the open houses that are coming up, you know? And maybe it's the virtual open house where, you know, hey, people are submitting their water features and idea shopping, right? And it's the Litchfield Park version of HGTV kind of thing. And I liked the name for it too. I, I don't know where you stole that from.
I thought of it all on my own, actually.
She had an article.
But I mean, that would be, that would be such a cool addition because really the purpose of this, I, I agree with you, you know, is to get, inspire people to take care of their homes, right? And that's, we don't have an HOA here, so we have to do it by peer pressure sometimes.
Yeah, we, well, it's not the way of HOA. We have city codes and then those city codes are enforced by, uh, the code enforcement. But I would ask this question and I like the way Commissioner Gertz began to phrase what you were saying in the very beginning. I think, well, here's the question. Are we involving the community enough in Yard of the Quarter as it is now?
No.
You and I know, we're not from around here. We noticed Yard of the Quarter quickly, right? But are we involving the community enough in Yard of the Quarter?
We'd like to remove us a little bit and involve our community and our citizens more.
I lived here for thirty years and I had no idea it existed until.
Really?
Oh, I bet you're.
I was just gonna say, cause your family's very involved in the city, so I'm surprised at that.
I noticed as I'd ride my bike or run, I'd run and ride my bike on every street in the city and so I'd notice it, you know?
That's what I was gonna say too, like with kids, like you're walking your kids around the city and that's where you probably see it first and you're like, this town has Yard of the Quarter. You know, if you're from out of town, for sure.
I wonder if there's a way to have, you know, include, and we can nominate it if you choose to and then also maybe include some nominations from online.
We tried that one.
I, I feel like we've tried this a lot to get the community involved for years and it doesn't happen. I tell all of my friends and neighbors, every now and then they'll say, hey, I saw one that you should look at and then I'll go look and I'll nominate it, but it's maybe two in the last five years.
My kids give me half of my nominations.
Do you think our social media presence is like hitting more people now? Do you think, is it, do you, you know, I mean, I don't know.
So I don't know what the exact demographics are, but I could say in just my little part of the neighborhood, it seems like there's younger families that have moved in in the last three years. And just from talking to them all, I know that they are all kind of social media savvy, more so than I am.
Well, that's, that's their way of communicating. Yeah.
And I'll tell you this, when I heard about what Chuck was doing, I started to follow it.
Mm-hmm.
And holy moses. I didn't realize you, he's got minimal equipment, but his skills are, are so good that the way he presents things, it's pretty impressive.
I, I really like the idea to evolve, to evolve it in general. I was initially kind of conflicted with expanding it outside of the front yard, thinking like our idea is to, the public image, like that's what people see, but to evolve it to current. Or, uh, it's maybe online. I mean, people see the whole community and we can evolve the program to see, draw off the inside of houses too or, you know, the backyards as well.
I think that, I, yeah, I mean, I just like, if you live in, like my front yard is just rocks, you know? And so some people have chosen that or their house was that way and they can't afford to, or don't want to because of water and stuff. So they've put all of their effort and their time and their money in their backyard and it's still beautiful and prideful, but nobody else, you know, gets to see it.
Especially in the, the newer areas where there's not like a porch.
Right, right.
The house isn't set up to have a big front yard. It's set up to have a big backyard.
Right.
So then.
We do have an image online.
So then the Yard of the Quarter sign would need to have like a QR code, right? I'm just thinking all the, the whole thing through.
Well, in my dream world, there would be a Yard of the Quarter sign, so.
If it's the backyard, they, they're driving their bike by or whatever, they scan it and then they can see it. Social media, you know, Chuck, hopefully Chuck agrees to do all this.
Just for the record, I do know what a QR code is. Use your phone and take a picture of it.
I haven't gotten that far yet, but I don't, I think it's, I don't know.
Maybe it's a step to go, it's a step to evolving it. We just add to it. You know, instead of doing, instead of just scrapping Yard of the Quarter and replacing it with this, we just add.
Yeah.
We're doing Yard of the Quarter and try and get someone to submit their backyard online or, you know, whatever we're trying to add.
We can try and use Chuck to highlight this new one that we voted on to try and get Yard of the Quarter as a concept out to the residents. Maybe we can reach out to the winners and when we tell them we want to put up the sign and invite them to the next council meeting, uh, also say, would you be open to having our social media guy come out and video, photograph, whatever, to kind of push the concept of Yard of the Quarter and that this is something that RPG does for the community.
I'd still like to have some more community involvement in the submission part, at least the submission part. I just feel like we shouldn't be the only ones. We shouldn't be the ones that are picking and voting and then doing the winner. I just feel like it's too closed of a circle.
What if we did something like, I'm not sure how the nominees come in to play, but if we take, let's say, each time we have three nominees and that, that little corrugated sign goes in the front yard, Yard of the. Yard of the Quarter nominee with the QR code, and the community can vote?
That would be cool. That'd be really cool. We may not get any votes.
It's like a million.
It'd be really cool.
It's like a million walkers this time of year, too.
Yeah, no, I love that idea.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
I just don't know where the nominees come from.
I don't, I don't.
Maybe the, so the QR code, just on the regular sign might be to, like, hey, here's the website you can nominate. But perhaps as we have other events around the city where people do attend, maybe more so those that have just local, more local than an outside attraction just 'cause they don't vote for that, um, maybe we have a sign that just features Yard of the Quarter so that people walk by and go, oh, okay, interesting.
What is that, right?
Yeah, what's that?
Just the foot traffic at the Wine and Art Festival this weekend. I mean, you could imagine how many people would put it right in the center of the cer, right?
Yeah.
And then probably a thousand, well, I don't know how many people are there. I would guess there were a lot. We bought a vase, these vases, once it's so big you can't call it a vase.
The artist thinks you.
They did, it was heavy.
Yeah. So we have QR codes on our A-frames at our festivals that, um, direct people to, like, event surveys. So we do have that, but at, at the community, the more, um, Litchfield Park centric ones, we can certainly do that, maybe even at the concerts, um, put something out there.
Do people scan it and do the survey?
Well, we've just started using them, so hopefully, a couple of times, yes, so.
Cool.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just say that if we go that route, we could try and promote it, like you're saying, like, State of the City, you know, 'cause there's a lot of residents there for that.
Yeah.
The concerts, other events in the city, we could do that. And we could do social media, um, to promote it. But also, maybe we could still nominate as a backup or kind of in conjunction with it. That way, if we don't get enough nominations or something, then we still have something to go off of. I think, oop, I'm sorry.
I think the big problem, though, is we have to rewrite the guidelines behind how many nominees, how it's going to be done, you know? That, that's a bigger task, I think, at hand. If there's no nominees, do we do three? If there's already three nominees, do we not? And.
What's our Plan B kind of thing, like, what's our contingency?
Yeah, and I, I do think there's, as much as we don't want to pick winners, there's some sort of level of selection that we'll need to have and a curation of what's submitted, right? If I'm angry with my neighbor and the yard looks like trash, I might just send him to Yard of the Quarter and that's probably not what we want, right? So I think we'll have to have, like, there has to be some filtering mechanism or something.
So they wouldn't make it straight to the.
Final.
Right, there, there would be some, and perhaps that's where our role, right, comes in. So out of these fifteen nominations, these five are the ones that are posted. Thank you to everybody else for nominating.
Well, and also, there's other reasons we might remove them, such as they won last time, right? So I think there's always gonna have to be some sort of process to review it.
You could also get over-nominating. I mean, if one person just goes out and, you know, collects fifty houses.
I had that thought, too, like, you would never send Chuck out to, right? I mean, you can't ask Chuck to go film a hundred and twenty houses. Because it would, it would have to be a, a level, you know, in respect of his time.
Well, we could just ask our residents to submit their own homes, just like the, you know, the, the Christmas lights.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and there's already guidelines, you could ask your dad how those guidelines are written and.
So I will tell you.
Do that seasonally, like, like you were saying, you know, do the water feature in the summer, do the, the seating areas and the, and those are gonna change from year to year with all the renovations that are happening. I mean, that would be, that would be really cool to expand that. We don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Mm-hmm.
It gets recognition out there to people who want to share their, their passions.
Did you guys drive past the Christmas lights? So we got them off of, um, one of the social media things. Chuck, actually, is the one who showed me how to look for it. And then, uh, when we drove through there, it was so crowded that you couldn't just drive, you had to wait for the cars in front of you to be done looking so that you could then move into their spot and then you would drive. It's pretty incredible. I wa, I was actually really surprised at the crowd that it had. And we were there, I want to say around nine o'clock at night. So it wasn't like it was, you know, just after dinner, it was like a few hours after dinner. So are there any other thoughts on this? Or at this point, is it a good place to, like, kind of stop and process for a month and think through everything that we've talked about?
Jot down ideas and.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Final thoughts? Okay. Thank you very much, Vice Chairperson Phillips.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening to me again about this.
Orange Tree Painting. Orange Tree Painting Event Updates, pardon me. Presenter Tricia Kramer, Director of Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you, Chairman Taddy. Just a couple of brief updates. If you haven't seen it yet, um, on our city, um, page, we do have an event posted for the Orange Tree Paintings, um, March eighteenth and nineteenth, as you guys said last month. Uh, we'll be doing it from seven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. We thought that five-hour window was probably appropriate amount of time for volunteers that are out each day. Um, we have received some residents and small groups that are interested in coming out, so we've been getting some, um, contact from those interested. And it's up on the website, on the homepage, under News and Announcements, Council Knows. And if you know of anyone that wants to volunteer, just like you guys did last time, bring them. If you know of specific groups, if you could let Kyle or I know, too, just so we can plan, um, for the supplies. But Kyle is going to get the paint and the brushes and whatever paint doesn't get used that weekend, his guys will just continue to use, so that's no big deal. Um, spoke to Chairman Taddy earlier and, um, commissioners that are available will take the lead, like you did last time, to, uh, round up the troops and have them out there doing their thing in quadrants. And Kyle is going to get back to the commission, probably by email, on any areas that he's hoping that you guys can focus on first and foremost with the volunteers. I guess the only other thing was to check and see which commissioners definitely will be available which days, so he has an idea of how many supervisors more left, or less will be out there.
Can you say the times again?
Seven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM, Saturday and Sunday.
Do you feel like you have enough, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Do you feel like you have enough volunteers or do we desperately need more? Are we in the middle of it right now?
Would love more, yeah.
We need a small army out there.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gertz, do you remember, we had a map last time where we had the quadrants that we sent the teams out into, we would almost, in some cases, I think, start right on the south side and the north side of some quadrants, and they were working towards each other, and.
Yeah.
Do you, can we dig that map up from email?
I'll see if I have that, um.
I'm sure I have it somewhere in email, I just, I haven't looked for it yet.
I think Kyle needs to tell us, too, where to, where to start.
Kyle probably has a few, like, hey, this area really needs to get hit.
Like, stuff in the main driveway.
Yeah.
So we could take that map and we could show it to him, be like, hey, man, tell us what the focus areas are. Last, the only thing I'm thinking is, last year, we didn't do Old Litchfield Road, or two years ago, whenever we did it.
We didn't do part of that where the overseeding wasn't completed.
The Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts came through and did it a few weeks later, once the overseeding had taken hold or whatever, however you say it.
Did we decide we're doing a second one, or is this the only one?
We're doing two days.
But it, didn't we speak last time about another one in the fall?
Like a follow-up?
Okay.
Think, well, I think Kyle said they want to do it once a year. So whatever we don't get, this, the, uh, Public Works is gonna do.
And then they could come through after and, yeah, I think that's right.
Put the sunblock on before the summer.
Mm-hmm. I'll get my base, that'll be my base day, base tan. Which is nothing but red.
With social media, it's important that the time, like, the seven thirty time, they need to be there at seven thirty, 'cause we do this whole, you know, rundown.
Little, yeah, info session at the beginning.
They can't show up at ten and just expect, yeah.
Jump in, yeah.
Are you bringing the high schoolers again?
I, so I'm not even gonna be here on the eighteenth, I'm gonna have to come on the nineteenth, but I'm get, I'm gonna round up some troops, yeah.
Nice.
They all need volunteer hours for college.
Nice.
But next year, I'm gonna be out of kids, 'cause they're all gonna be out of college.
The Taddy family will be there.
I was gonna say, somebody else will.
We're working on, um, neighbors and friends and hoping to have at least one or two teams represented. I think my daughter, I guess when they get to high school, they just don't want to hang out with you anymore? Is that how parenting works?
I was just waiting till high school.
About fourteen.
Yeah.
Oh, I think she's gonna be rounding up some buddies, too, and, and we start them on the south side, meeting us in the middle or something. So the only other thing that we did last time, Commissioner Gertz and I met with, uh, Richard, I, once or twice, I think just once, once or twice.
Get the strategy down.
Yeah.
Coordination of scrubbing and painting a line at the top and.
He gave me the keys at one point, too, for the back, there's a back shed. And he handed over the, the keys. He went. He got, he got a brush, huh? You need a brusher or you need a painter? Those are the two jobs, brush, paint. Brushing happens first, then the paint.
I think most of the kids I had painted their own legs.
Well, there's a heat print by my house, and that was one of my kids. And she, I don't know how I missed it, and it's still on the sidewalk, thank you, though.
Memories.
We talked about a T-shirt.
I thought that was a done deal.
We do not have a budget for a T-shirt.
We came, we saw, we painted. Twenty twenty-three. Not yet.
Yeah, I would say, since you guys have named this as an annual event, that perhaps moving forward in this next fiscal year, we can talk to, um, the city manager about getting a small budget for, for that, yeah.
I like that.
Why couldn't someone that showed up at ten or eight o'clock jump in?
Well, we won't be there.
Yeah, it's hard to know when I'll be there.
Yeah, we spread out.
And we just scatter.
So one thing that I thought was super effective, um, we had three people in dump carts.
Yeah.
Bruising the town.
That was so.
We had, like, one team on, you know, all the way up north, we had another team south of the lake, and we were able to get water bottles, more paint.
Yep.
Like, we just quick supplies out to everybody and keep touching base. Hey, how are you guys doing? Okay, well, let's try and get some more people down here then, and we'll have them work from this point towards you, or whatever the case. So it wa, it was super effective. And, um, I remember I was taking notes on our, on our map, right? Where I was like, okay, they just did this part, they're here. And then we could use cell phones to just call around, hey, maybe, um, we could, 'cause there was one team that was struggling a bit, right? And a couple of us were able to notice it, and then we were like, all right, well, maybe they need a little more help on their, like, south side. But not struggling, they were, they were methodically painting.
Mm-hmm.
Very diligently.
They were, yeah, they weren't missing any spot on that tree. So, and, you know, and it's, it's a really fun event, too. I thought it was a blast, and I, we even had pizza after, I think, right? Pizza?
Ice cream.
Ice cream sandwiches, that's right.
Yep.
I bet we could get borrowed, we can donate pizzas or something.
How cool would that be?
Like, you get, like, fries to donate shirts to or something. Yeah, if they put their logo on it, yeah, that's something we want to look at in the future.
We only have a week.
I'm saying.
Next time, yeah. I don't think it, it took till twelve thirty, either.
I think we were all back at the shop, I want to say, right between twelve and twelve thirty.
There are groups that we have.
So you guys finished right out here, right?
We.
I remember that.
Yeah, but we started.
All the way down.
And then we came in and got more paint, and then need, saw the, the need to do this middle. But I had older kids, so they were, they were pretty fast.
A little different, yeah.
I rem, I finished at the lake, like, I, I was like, all right, there's, like, five or six trees here, I'll just start, and we, we worked towards the team.
Should you say you need to know who was gonna be there and who wasn't?
Um, just to give essentially Kyle an idea of comfort level of that there will be some people out there that have a hand in running the operation.
We are out there, that'll be good.
Right, and you're.
I am out of Florida town. I'll be there the eighteenth.
You can put me on for the nineteenth.
I can be there both days.
I can be there the eighteenth, but I probably have to leave early, so I don't know if I'm any help.
I just need Commissioner Gertz.
I'm sure you are.
So that was actually, uh, Justin.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Right on.
You can get.
I can do at least one of the days.
Still a funny drive around Cleveland Browns, Jeff, though.
What it is.
But I'll tell you before.
Okay, so I will follow up with Kyle on finding out if there are areas that he wants you guys to focus on and see if perhaps he can get together, at least with Chairman Taddy, to go over any, any instructions from Public Works.
Sounds good. And we'll get the map emailed in. I'm sure I have it somewhere.
Yeah.
We, we can find the map.
Okay.
Give him a chance to look at it and tell us where to focus.
Were you there last year or you weren't there? So there was a media release that we had the kids sign, for their photos to be taken?
Right.
And then a waiver, city waiver.
Yes, and we had, we collected them and we handed them over to Sunny. That is absolutely.
Yeah, that was the first thing we did was have them sign the waiver, get in their groups, and assign them a supervisor, and off they went.
We're only doing the trees and inside the walls, right? Not like the ones along Camelback or outside.
That's my understanding.
Just inside the walls, and it's only the trees within, you could, you could kind of tell which ones are the city trees, they're within about three feet of the curb. Some are new, but for the most part, a lot of them are just older, older trees, yeah. Are there any other questions about that?
I'm just gonna say really quick, I'm gonna reach out to a neighbor about getting a T-shirt, just to give you an idea, um, about pricing, or maybe next year. You, I mean, we have T-shirt people that we use for other things, it's just we have.
You got a guy?
Zero budget and zero idea of sizing and the amount of people. So for us to invest in getting them, we don't want to waste money that wasn't even originally available. That's why I think moving forward, if we've got a better idea and can plan with a year's notice now, I think we'll be able to work on that and also work on sponsorships for them.
One of the things might be kind of practical with that is because you never know how a tour is gonna show up.
Yes.
Just get these same shirt designs, those same second, those third.
And like volunteer on the back, right?
Yeah, just big old volunteer.
Maybe same sizes or something, because otherwise, how do you ever know?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and that's tough if you're working with young kids and adults.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have gloves, small, medium, and large gloves.
Yeah.
So that was, yeah, they were like the blue gloves, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's little paint cans, 'cause they need their own little paint cans instead of just.
Yeah, I know Kyle's gonna do the smaller ones, he's not gonna do the.
Gallon?
But I would say would have been helpful to have, yes.
Can't remember now, this is why you always gotta do a survey afterwards, right?
We have little, like, cans, you pour them into there.
I can't remember.
Okay, that sort of thing, okay.
Yeah, more like a bucket, almost, or.
A big bucket, yeah. The one, what we used was, okay.
Oh, I know, paper towels, I had to go home and get my own paper towels.
Oh, and paintsters, 'cause I joined ASN, they gave us the paintsters.
Now we're remembering all these.
It's good to remember.
Lots of water.
Yeah.
Maybe some paint remover.
Yeah, maybe some cleanup stuff, 'cause, and, and perhaps a, a word to the volunteers on, be careful as you walk over driveways, especially paved driveways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Spill the paint streak. And then, um, afterwards, I guess there would be, it'd probably be worth, you know, do we still have ice cream sandwiches?
From last year, they're probably not good.
A little refreshment.
A little snack.
Sorry, refreshment.
So if we think of anything else, I'm sure we could always just share with Kyle and go from there.
Yeah, or email us, that'll work, if you think of a, a supply that we didn't go over today, or a question, yeah. Email us.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Tricia. So I guess this next one, we would just skip, then, or are you gonna speak on it? So the next one is City Gateway Sign Information Update, it was Kyle Ames, Director of Public Works.
I don't have any specific knowledge on this, so I would just say that whatever is in your agenda, please review it, and then if you have questions, get, get with Kyle, and I'm sure that we'll put this back on the April Agenda, too, for more specifics.
So I'm, I'll move down to G, then, just for the sake of, you know, not trying to go over an item that Kyle's just not good for. Creation of a new city park, Brian Faith, RPG Commissioner.
Thank you. Let me keep this pretty brief today, so that we can all have a chance to get out there. Basically, the city has this land in the mask you can see, that they, uh, acquired in two thousand and five, and it's kind of a weird stretch of land, it's grassy, it's got hills. I've driven past it a lot and thought, like, oh, it's kind of a median, not thinking much of it, but there's a fair amount of land there, and, kinda like designated as a park or anything, so my initial thought was, we could just put a bench out there, give it a name, and put it on the city website, which I did also include in the handouts, which are the rest of the parks that are listed on the city, uh, website, and it says what kind of amenities they have there and things. So, I think there's opportunity here, at least to tell the citizens that, you know, this is space that you can use. Probably limited things you can do, the space that seems most open to do something with is at the north end, and it's, I went out and walked in it, I would encourage you guys to all go out and walk.
I do almost every day with my dog.
Yeah.
Oh, right on.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, I mean, my plan was, we could talk about it, you know, at the next meeting, we could think about it, or meeting after that, if time allows, come up with ideas, concerns. Now, maybe it's a few different, 'cause there's kinda like a few different areas, and you got the road that comes in there. There's gotta be something we could do.
I had no idea it was that much land, one point three acres?
Probably just 'cause it's so long. Yeah, I mean, I know it is deep in spots, like you said, up at the northern end.
That's just the, on the assessor's website, how big it says, I don't know if that includes, like, the setbacks from the road or anything, but...
Oh, yeah. A couple of old fires.
The ideas are flying.
Dog parks.
Yeah, dog park, maybe squeeze a paperball court in there?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you move the, uh, children's playsets from a different park, so it opens up space, or, I don't know. It seems like a good opportunity, if nothing else, to just give it a name and put it on the website.
I like your idea about maybe a bench, I mean, 'cause it's not a lot of space there, but maybe we could make this, uh, Eagle Sound Project of cleaning up those trees, 'cause those trees are pretty... Like, there's a lot of things living in the bottoms of those trees, I know, from taking my dog up there too.
Oleanders there along the, along the wall.
But cleaning that up, putting a couple benches there, like a reflection kind of park, or, you know, whether it's Palmer, I don't know what word I'm looking for, like Zen Park, or...
Meditation.
Yeah.
You know, the, the condos there face that.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, they have, like, access to the golf course behind, but, you know, wanna just make sure we're mindful of...
Right, yeah.
That's their front yard, also, you know what I mean? We stayed in one of those when we got our house flooded. Kids love going across street, playing, it's great, little, I, I remember, I went out, I found a whole knapsack, and like, it looked like somebody had made a little home there, with all the bricks and stuff.
Yeah, they hop over the wall there.
Mm-hmm.
It's funny, 'cause you just walked around if you wanted to. Hmm. You know, we're looking at this part of the map, there's totally other than, I'm sorry, guys. The median is you exit the end wave at there, that's how I usually get to and from work and everything. Almost every weekend, I find, like, two tall boy beer cans in that median there. It drives, it drives me nuts. I always find people just throwing their beer cans out in that little median, out to daisers. I used to have them picked up, and my kids sold for recycling, but... I don't, I, I see that a lot there, just see a lot, see a lot of that litter around.
They've been out partying, they're coming home, and they gotta clean out the car.
Yeah. Well, I'm always about putting trash cans in, and I know that sounds so silly.
No, there has to be a trash can.
You can put one, so they feel good, put their car, beer cans out the window, right?
My first year on this commission, that was my big thing, is to get trash cans around Villanueva, from, for people just leaving their dog poop bags, and...
Yeah.
And I think it's helped, I mean, I really do.
One hundred percent, one hundred percent.
So I don't mean to cut that off, but it's not an, an agenda item, so I'm sorry, we gotta redirect back to the agenda item.
I would like to make this a future, uh, action item.
Yeah, yeah.
Put that on the agenda.
Very good idea.
And if there's any costs associated for designating a park...
Yeah, I think we'll need to do kind of a lot of research with it, if there's any restrictions on the land, if you gotta...
McCoy, McCoy, I'll take it.
Yeah, like, what will, uh, go in park?
Can you cram?
What can I put there?
Name it or not.
Yeah.
McCoy Pickleball Court.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Faith, is there anything else you wanted to add before we ask for any other questions, or...
Think about it, and I didn't think everyone had already gone out there and looked at it, so get out there and look at it, if you have.
Right on. Thank you for that. Hey, you guys aren't gonna believe it.
Wanted to make sure that if there's any, like, legal ramifications of designating the park, if there's anything the city has to do, what, what is an agenda item we want? Few words.
May I ask your question of, um, Tricia?
Of course.
Will we be circling back with Kyle on the agenda items at our next meeting?
Yeah, we said we would put them on for April.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about, any questions for Commissioner Faith, or about the park proposal? Not a proposal, the park discussion, Central Park discussion, both full parks.
Under nature of clean park space.
I didn't realize it was that big. Okay, thank you again. Commissioners report on current events. Commissioner Fix.
I have nothing to report, it's not on the agenda.
You'll cover girls, or... We already covered that.
Commissioner Gertz.
I went to the, uh, the Art and Wine Festival last weekend, that was really good, and if you, maybe I'm seeing this, I'll, also, to anyone who happens to read notes or listen, um, if you're used to seeing the same art every year after year, I noticed a lot, there's a lot more turnover, and we're getting a lot more modern or digital art, and then those sorts of things in there, so, like, you know, it's, it's not just the, the same paintings and pictures you've been looking at the last five years, so I'd encourage you to, uh, take a look at this one and the other festivals that are coming up, so I've seen some more variety in the artists that, that come to that in the last couple of years.
Oh. Yeah.
Right on. Commissioner Faith?
I did not make it to the wine and art festivals here, I don't have anything to report.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Since last we met, I also went to the, the Wine and Art Festival, the Wigwamah and Art Festival, and, uh, we also had the Five K here, all were well-run events, well-attended, we, our usual beautiful weather for them, and, uh, that's, that's the fun time of year, you know, when you, you go from the kids' basketball game to the Five K, or to the art show, or they're doing the regatta down at the lake, and, you know, again, that's, that's why we all, like, live in a place like this.
Commissioner Cobre?
I also attended the Fun Run, uh, that was a low-run event, so good job to the staff, I enjoyed it, planning was out for that, and I also attended the Art and Wine Festival, it's a good time, so, yeah.
Vice Chairperson Phillips?
My current event is sort of a full-circle thing, so my daughter, her son, her husband, and little guy, who grew up here, are moving back here after twenty-five years in California.
Wow!
That's fun.
Cool.
Yeah.
That'll be exciting for you.
I'm so happy for you.
Yeah.
I know, I mean, I'm just like, what? Yeah? So, yeah, at the end of the month, actually.
Great.
That is awesome, so...
Yep, she's back.
So I don't think I missed an event this time around, always a blast to hang out, um, the Fun Run, all the tatties, except for me, ran in it. Well, no, Tone didn't run in it, my son, he volunteered, though, he was handing out water up at, uh, Old Litchfield and Campbell, with, uh, the Key Club, or the Builders Club, I think it's Builders Club, in, um, Western Sky. But, I mean, all amazing events. I, the more I look at the construction, the more I can't wait for the construction to be done, 'cause I see the events and how crowded they are, and I just keep thinking to myself, man, this is gonna be something special once we move it over to the park, it's gonna be crazy, it's gonna be so, so, um, just expansive. And even the concerts on the lawn at the Wigwamah, you know, having an amputator and being able to project the sound out, it's just, I think it's gonna be so cool. So, that was...
Can I interject a question along those lines?
Yes, sir.
What you wanna tell me? When, but I keep getting asked this, when is the first projected date of any sort of use in the new city center?
I don't know, but I'm gonna tell you that that's not something that is on the agenda.
Right, I don't think we can, sorry.
We'll talk about it afterwards.
Yeah.
So, there's only one thing left.
Commissioner, turn.
A second.
Are there any questions? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everybody, what a wonderful meeting. Should I gobble?
Yeah.
Like you mean it.
Right?
Pretend you're a judge.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not.